Call to order these Ironton City Council meeting, October fourteenth, twenty twenty one. With us this evening, we have Pastor Kim Gabbard from Impact Church to give our invocation. If you would please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after Pastor Gabbard's.
Please pray with me. Our precious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, Father, and I just thank you so much for this beautiful day. God, I thank you so much as the leaves begin to change that you remind us that you are in charge of every little thing that happens in our universe. And so, Father, we, tonight, as we meet, we just pray for guidance, Lord, we pray for wisdom for everyone involved here tonight, God. We just pray for discernment, Lord, we pray that no matter what, that we would just keep you in mind in every decision that's made here tonight. And, and Father, we ask that each and every person just walk out of here just with it with a good feeling, God, and just, just knowing that everything that was done here tonight, Father, that you will get the glory. Lord, we thank you for our city of Ironton, we thank you that you have given us the responsibility to be political and spiritual leaders among these people, Father. And so, we thank you for that opportunity, Lord, and we just lift the rest of this meeting up to you. And I pray all this in Jesus' precious heavenly name, and amen.
Thank you Pastor Gabbard.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Clear.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
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 Riz.
Here.
Next, we have the approval of minutes of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, our regular council meeting minutes. Are there any errors, omissions, additions to those minutes? I have one, Marta. On, on page two, when it says nuisance property, it should read vacant property. Although, I did say nuisance property, but I was mistaken, it's vacant property. Any other? Hearing no others, those will stand as approved. Next, we have audience participation. If you would like to address the Ironton City Council, sit forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Council. My name is Chris Perry, my address is eight forty North Sixth Street, Ironton. Couple of issues. One comes in the form of a communique that I had with citizen Keith Ann Legg at twenty-one oh six and a half South Fifth Street. Or possibly the half is the part that's causing the issue. She has a sober living home that is adjacent to her house. Haven't driven by to take a look at it yet. But they, the residents of that sober living home have taken over her drive, well, their yard, her drive and part of her yard, almost budding up to her back door where she can't get her vehicle in and out. She's never really had any issue or any kind of altercation with them, but she can't seem to get any resolution. So she has asked that I bring it up to City Council to see if there's anything that you guys can do to help her get some relief from that situation. She said it happens weekly.
So, just, just so you're aware, most of the time the citizens want to bring something to the City Council, we really can't do anything other than just ask the mayor to follow up with the same thing, or the police, or whatever the appropriate channel is, because it's a kind of a day-to-day thing in the city, or we're just legislation and appropriation. But, this is, this is the forum for people to address their concerns with the city, so continue on.
Okay.
Did you say twenty-one oh six?
Twenty-one oh six and a half, and again, I'm not sure if she lives at the half, or if the half is the adjacent property that's.
Which street was that, I'm sorry?
Uh, South Fifth Street.
Is it a shared driveway?
It, from the photo that she sent, it is not. It looks like it's her driveway, but I can get you some more details, Your Honor. The next issue that I wanted to address, a few meetings ago, it was discussed in council that there was, we were trying to get some resolution or maybe some, some proposals on how the murals might take place on the flood wall. I work for Star Community Justice, and I've spoken to all the directors there, and they've actually communicated with Judge Ballard as well. I guess he's big on community service type initiatives in the community. And that's actually why I have Aghast Electa Royal with me. She's newly back to Ironton as well, she graduated in twenty twelve and is interested in getting to know more about local politics. And so, I've asked her to help raise awareness of this idea. It's not just residents of Star, but since I'm there every day, there are some truly amazing artists. Anybody that's had the opportunity to visit Star or to work at Star can testify to that fact. Kind of springboarded off of that to the idea of maybe opening the, the project to the greater community, whether it's Lawrence County, Lawrence, Scioto, however it goes. And instead of spending sixty or seventy thousand dollars to pay an artist to come from outside the community, which is fine. I've seen Fort Smith's wall, it is amazing, it's truly amazing. But maybe it might mean a little more to our community if the wall itself is painted by local members of the community, or if people are looking to find some way to repay their debt to society, so to speak.
I don't want to deflect again, but I'm going to deflect again.
Sure.
Because when you heard us discussing it, it was because the mayor brought it up to us that that project was ongoing, and he's, his office is actually taking care of that. Mike's interested in the arts, and so we were talking about it because I asked him to like loop Mike in, but now he can loop the Electa in as well.
Okay. That's all, God. Thank you.
Welcome back, Electa. Do you take pictures too? Are you one of the Royals, are you Bruce's relative?
That's my brother.
All right. Anybody else that'd like to address the Ironton City Council? Mayor, John?
I can.
Okay. Moving on to communications. Oh, Chris, go.
Nick Kuhn. It's ten, ten oh three Latonia, he doesn't live there, but it's, it's a property, it's a nuisance property. He and other neighbors have dealt with pests, smells, high grass, unattended animals. And he said he's submitted, and other neighbors have submitted through the new online complaint, I guess code complaint. Is there anything, do we have anything on that address?
I mean, I'd have to look. There's a bunch of them on there. Chris, do you know if they submitted that anonymously, or if they, because if they didn't, they should get updates.
Well, probably because I kind of talked to him, I said, if you want to address it in council, I mean.
Did you say ten oh three Latonia?
Ten oh three Latonia, yeah. It's, I guess it's getting pretty bad. I guess it was, earlier on in the summer, it was bad also, somebody came in and actually cut the grass, but it's gotten back into the state of disrepair again, and it's even worse than it was before, so the neighbors. Different types of pests and the stenchies and smells and everything associated with unkept properties and animals.
All right. John, they, they've been knocking out a lot of them with solid, solid waste.
Thank you very much.
Criticating citations.
I will pass that along, thank you.
Don't miss anybody. Moving on to communications. I asked Marta, last time we had a letter from Mike Pierce that was supposed to be attached to the communication, so the minutes will, will have those attached the next time. Also, I think all of us got a letter from Ohio University Southern regarding a visit from the President Hugh Sherman and Vice President and Provost to Ohio University on October twenty-seventh, that all of you get that. So what they failed to realize in sending that to all of us is that if we all show up, it violates the sunshine law. So, so if there are people that want to attend, please coordinate that through me before we reply and RSVP, because we would have to, I mean, if four of us attend, we'd have to call special meetings. So, we'll try to avoid that. So please, if you're going to attend, an RSVP, coordinate that through me so I can make sure that we don't violate sunshine law by, by attending that. Although, I would encourage everyone to, that can to attend that, it seems like a worthy event. Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, nine a.m., Rife Rotunda, the Ohio University Southern welcoming their new president, the twenty-second president of Ohio University, President Hugh Sherman. Report.
Please.
Roll call.
If, if no city business is discussed, I don't think it would violate the sunshine law for all of you to attend a public gathering at the university.
Okay.
So that would be my opinion, so long as you're not discussing city business. If you are discussing city business with President and Provost, you would have to call special meetings.
It specifically mentions that we are interested in hearing, in hearing about how we can better serve the community, partnering with schools, businesses, and industry. It dabbles a little too much into that for my comfort. You may. Yeah, yeah. I'd have a standing meeting with him though, every like quarter, so. What's that? Sherman? Yeah. Yeah, we, we all meet with him. Okay. OU mayors, as they call it. Okay. So I do express a lot of those things too. Good information, no saying, thank you.
Is, is this the president of the university, the hall?
Yes, I, in a, yes. Because the, the regional dean and the, and the campus dean are the same, Nicole Page. Reports, we have the public hearing of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one regarding ordinance twenty-one forty-three. Report in its entirety in your packet, the public feedback was none, just FYI. Moving on to ordinances, if the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-one fifty-seven second reading by title.
Repealing ordinance eighteen eighty-three that the city of Ironton, Ohio, declaring an emergency second reading.
Chris.
Mike, I'm going to suspend the rules and give ordinance twenty-one fifty-eight third reading.
Bed. Twenty-one fifty-seven. Nate.
Discussion.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to have some discussion as far as if this, if this is repealed, is there any interest in keeping that fund, funded? And if so, with what dollars?
Chris.
Yeah, that funds, they, one of them, will be funded by the three percent hotel, motel excise tax, one and a half percent of that, three percent will go to, her ordinance twenty-one fifty-eight, that'll go toward, one and a half percent of the three percent will go towards the economic development fund.
Okay. Right now, we're receiving one percent of what's collected. So, if that is passed, it's my understanding that one percent will not come back to us, so it'll be a net of one percent. So that means net gain of one percent. Right?
It'll be two percent.
Okay. So that, so are we going to take away any money from the community improvement fund?
What are we taking? We're not taking any money away from the community improvement fund, no. But the city has that fund paying towards the community improvement fund.
Okay.
I'm not favoring that. We're, what this, what the twenty-one fifty-seven does is, we're trying to take the burden of fees off the citizens and allow some of the businesses to have came into town, to bring other residents into town, to pay for some of the things they shouldn't pay for. We're talking about paving roads for Dairy Queen and everything, you know, everybody in Ironton might not like Dairy Queen, they probably don't want their fee money paid for roads for Dairy Queen, that's personal preference. So, I don't think our citizens should be, you know, funding public things like that. That should be up to the city to figure out ways to fund that. And I think twenty-one fifty-eight's a good piece of legislation to do that. And as well as take the burden off of the citizens for, you know, another fee on our utility bill.
Well, I'm a little disagree with that, because while not everybody likes ice cream, there's still everybody's going to benefit the community with the tax dollars that Dairy Queen's going to be bringing in. So I think that's where the, the investment comes in.
But they shouldn't have, they shouldn't have paid for it.
It's, it's not necessarily the whole thing, it's being able to help, that was an example, being able to help out with some improvements. They're going to need to cite improvements, or you know, that could be for any new business coming in. It's, has some kind of corn, herb de corn here, and no potpourri. Go ahead.
And I know the bed taxes is separate ordinance, but it's kind of been a mingling of this, so. We, as far as I know, there's been no discussion with anybody, any hotel ownerships, local investors, anything like that, as far as the impact of hotels. I'd like to have them come to City Council and talk about how that would impact their business and their investment. So, I mean, I think while their, their separate ordinances are kind of interchangeable, so. We have some communication with that.
The hotel motel excise tax has been thrown back to court for three years. I tried to take it off the table six months ago. The last time that the investors and everybody else came in, they said that they were struggling, and they didn't want an extra three percent taking, you know, hurting business. But shortly thereafter, they raised the rates per room, so it kind of was spit in the face to, to council, I believe, that they would, you know, tell us that we can't impose, you know, which we hold ardently, I hold ardently, we, the city deserves a piece of that, all right? They're still going to get six percent. We get no sales tax from the county, I mean, so we're not getting the sales tax. All the counties get the sales tax and the six percent of the hotel most, motel excise tax. We're just asking for three percent. And like I said, you know, when, when you go and come in and bring four or five people in here and speak to us and tell us that if you, if you raise the fees at all, or raise the rates at all, it's going to kill business, and then they go right in after that and then raise the rates. I just think, I don't know, I just, that didn't really sit well with me, and I think citizens deserve a fair shakeout. Which hotel raised the rates, whether it's under, it's under the same umbrella, it's all the same people. The Michael P. office is over both of them.
Nate, that is a good call.
So, are we certain that they raised the rates just to spit in our face? Or is it because the cost of everything's increased, including the cost to employ people there?
Got to get Bob, Nate.
I don't know that they raised the rates, because the new hotel, I understand, has lowered the rates to target more business.
Chris.
They, they did raise the rates, but the, how are you going to raise the rate on a new hotel that didn't have rates to begin with? So, I mean, they, they did raise the rates, I mean, that's, that was documented, that they raised the rates after we had that discussion. Now, I mean, when you build a new hotel, you, you determine the rates to begin with, so there wasn't any rates to raise, they put the rates in there.
Can I suggest that we deal with the matter at hand and then have discussion on the ordinance itself? The matter at hand was to suspend the rules to give third reading to twenty-one fifty-seven, so. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Clear.
No.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
No.
Pierce.
No.
Riz.
Aye.
We can discuss ordinance twenty-one fifty-seven at a later date. No reason to further to labor it.
Should I mention that it was favorably recommended by strategic planning?
Yes, thank you. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-one.
Can I ask a question on the one Jacob just asked? Because was it originally, they, they said not favorably recommended, and then it went again and said.
No, no, somebody, somebody made, somebody made a motion to favorably, or unfavorably recommend, and it didn't have a second.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-one fifty-eight second read by title.
Establishing a hotel motel excise tax pursuant to O R C fifty-seven thirty-nine point zero eight A and declaring emergency second reading.
Chris.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and give ordinance twenty-one fifty-eight third reading.
Jacob.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Nate.
I'd just like to also say, I'd like to have an opportunity to, to invite the people that have, run, run and operate the hotel to, to at least speak, and, you know, because it does impact them and their business, and have them be able to come in and speak to what their current state is of operations, and how this would affect.
Chris.
Let's respond, I'm saying this has been, you know, this has been discussed for three years going. They, like I said before, they, they came in and, and, you know, spoke to council, and I think they tried to sell doing one to everybody, it's going to kill business, and then went back and raised rates shortly thereafter.
Bob.
I, I feel like I'm on the support of hotel tax, but I think that the owners, and I think the L A D C, and whoever wants to talk about, that we should offer them the opportunity to come in and explain what, what they feel like we need to do. I mean, you know, it's like, like I think we were talking there, they're paying us one percent right now for the bed tax, and that's coming into our city budget. So if we increase to go to three percent, well, then we're actually, they're not going to give us that one percent. So we're going to lose that one percent, we may gain another couple percent, but, but we're going to lose the one. And I think they need to have an opportunity to talk with us.
So, I'll, so I'll chime in, and not to be laborate, but, but what we're talking about is six percent that the county is getting. Just, just to be clear, we're, we're talking about six percent that we get one percent of, and the hotel is in Ironton. And both hotels are in Ironton, and we are having our citizens pay on their utility bill and economic development fee while we're getting one percent of six that the county is taking. And, and then, in addition to that, I'll say this, and this is my piece of it. When I go to Cincinnati to stay to watch the Reds lose, and eat Skyline Chili, I, I get on my Hilton app, and it says eighty-six bucks a night, and that's our advertised rate. And you know what? No matter what, no matter what the city does, no matter what the county does, as far as their, as far as their taxes go, that's not in their advertised rate. I get that as a whammy after I do my checkout. And you know what? It's not going to affect whether I click on check, book that hotel or not. It's not. And so, to, for the city of Ironton to, to get a piece of, and, and I won't even say fair piece, because it's really not even a fair piece, but a piece of what is in Ironton, I think is, and we've, we've heard, we've heard, and we've asked, we've even done the due diligence, we've sat through this, and we've done the due diligence of asking the county commissioners, would you please re-divide that? I mean, we have egg on our face, you're getting six percent, you're giving us one, would you just divide that? Let's do three, three. And what was their answer? Hell no, was their answer. So, that, that's my piece. I've, I've seen hands up everywhere, I'll start with Nate.
Just two points, I'd like to hear what their current state is, and what the hotels have to say about it. Next is, you know, I, I'm not opposed to the additional hotel tax. I would like to see it spent on something that's going to benefit the hotels and the community, like sports park, phase three trails, something like that, in coordination with, with the hotels. That's my, that's what I think. And that will allow that three percent dedicated to whatever venture that is, while also retaining the extra one percent for us without forfeiting.
And in addition to that, it's going to guarantee that those hotels stay full if we fund the sports park, Nate.
So, but if we, if we, if we just pass it right now, not in coordination, we're forfeiting that one percent to keep three percent, instead of having three percent dedicated to one of those special projects, and keeping that one percent, essentially taking four percent.
Chris.
Couple things, the, from wherever the county is taking six percent, they are, they are mandated, legally mandated, to spend so much of that back on projects like that. Now, that being said, I think that's the goal, when the legis, when I, you know, come up with legislation, that's the goal, to get one and a half percent back into economic development, and one and a half percent in the community development. So, all that money is going to help the hotels stay, stay full. I mean, I, I don't think anybody in here has a problem of, you know, allotting some of that money to some of these projects. That's, I would love to do that, but we, we need to determine, as a city, the city needs to determine what we are going to fund with that, and how it helps us, because as of right now, the sports park still is not inside the city limits. So, whatever sales tax, the, the states, or the county's not worrying where it's at, because they're going to get seven and a half percent sales tax on whatever is sold out there, no matter what. Now, what's, what is the city of Ironton doing out of that? If that is not incorporated or annexed into the city, what are we getting other than, you know, hotels? Which, that's great, full hotels is a great thing, people coming in is a great thing. But how is the sports park going to, you know, if it's not inside the city, I just, I, I don't understand why we're obligated to keep feeding money into a project that's not within the city limits.
Jacob.
I didn't have my hand up.
And then, Mike.
Mr. Harvey, there have been many valid and good points made this evening. I, I agree with many of them, but I, I think in fairness, it would be good to, it doesn't hurt this body hall to allow representatives from the hotel to come and speak to us. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. The motion we had on the table, again, just to, just to recollect, again, we deviated, but it was to suspend the rules to give ordinance twenty-one fifty-eight third reading. Roll call, please.
Clear.
No.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
No.
Pierce.
Aye.
Riz.
Aye.
Um, Nate, do you care to, uh, or Sam, either one, um, to have an invited guest on behalf of, I said an invited guest, at least a spokesperson, so we're not bombarded with fifteen people from the hotel group, and L E D C, and Lawrence County Commissioners, which, whichever is appropriate at the next meeting to, to address some of that. Um, and if it's the Lawrence County Commissioners, maybe we can get them on record to say that the Visitors Bureau will stay in Ironton if we choose not to do that, anyway. Now, that's another added bonus. Chris.
That has to stay, I don't know necessarily, but the money that's coming, that's another thing, is the money that's coming in from our hotels should especially be fun in that welcome center.
Yes. Do you care to, you guys care to coordinate that? Nate?
Could I, could I be two, one from investors and one from the actual hotel operations?
Be fine.
Okay.
Yep.
What's the difference between, I mean, I, I don't understand why we need seven, any guests, just have one representative come and give their spiel and.
As, as you, I'm gonna throw your words back at you, as you said, we've heard about this for three years, I don't, I don't think two guests make a difference. So. Moving on to resolutions, there are none. Miscellaneous, Mr. Pierce, you said you had some miscellaneous.
I just have several short things, uh, I'm sorry.
Are, are we out of ordinances? Cause I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Of ordinances.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll redact that. We're not in miscellaneous, and we didn't bypass resolutions yet, cause I've forgotten Nate had a motion to make.
Uh, I'd like to make the motion to take from the table ordinance twenty-one forty-three.
That's referencing the, um, amending the definition of family in the zoning code, just FYI. Chris.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Cleary. Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Riz.
Aye.
Martha, this had first reading already, this, if, if there's a motion, I would imagine that is one. Chris?
I'd like a motion to give ordinance twenty-one forty-three second reading.
Nate?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Riz.
Aye.
If the clerk could please give second reading by title only to ordinance twenty-one forty-three.
Amending section twelve, one-two-five-zero-point-zero-five, B, definition of family in the Ironton zoning code, second reading.
It has to have very separate readings, just FYI, and, um, along with that, I don't know if you guys heard me and Chris talking about, um, ordinance twenty-one eleven that created the R one A's, is it, was it, and we were waiting on maps, so, um, if, if and when you all feel it's appropriate to set those limits and start that rezoning process for R one A, let me know, and we'll, we'll do that sooner rather than later, at least get the ball rolling for whatever council sits here in December. Okay?
Yep.
Any other ordinances? Resolutions are none. Miscellaneous, back to Mr. Pierce.
Uh, first of all, I, I think Mr. Perry was here about a month ago and mentioned, uh, some grants, and I was just wondering if it'd be any follow-up on that.
I, I did, I know, but it was a, it was for West Virginia, and specific to Huntington had some matching things that they had to do, but it was a West Virginia grant, so we weren't, I actually followed up with our grant writers, Cindy Anderson, to ask.
Good, thank you.
And I, and I followed up with Mr. Perry to tell me.
I think we probably all received, uh, uh, an email today from Attorney Stephen Magus to the I P D for Public Records.
I did not receive that email, although I was made aware of it, and that is a, um, that's a, their email was not addressed to the I P D chief, it was addressed to P D chief, which, which is probably their error in communication, which is why they've received no communication, but, um, we'll ask Sam to have the, have Pam respond to that with the solicitors, public records request from the police, Sam. Did you get that today?
I didn't see it.
Okay.
I'll look.
Uh, in there.
It came in yesterday in an email.
Okay.
Cindy got it, then she forwarded to the Andersons, that's what it is, it was just just.
I did not, however, get it, Mike, so I had no idea what they were talking about.
Uh, in response to the letter that I had you read when I, in my absence, uh, Mr. Maynard greatly appreciated the patching of the streets in his area, uh, and it was done really, really well, and he just wanted to give his kudos to the street department, and I do as well, to thank Mr. Perrington, the street department, they did an excellent job. And I think there was another thing on the agenda, um, Charlotte Street, Columbia, and they even sent pictures. And I went there today, and that was an exceptionally well-done job patching that. That's down in the Green Valley area, where it's concrete, has to be cut out, and it's smooth as can be, and so really well done. Um, there's a gentleman, James Ford, contacted me and asked about having the city pick up some rubbish. He's got some wood and pieces of an old furnace and things, and this reminded me back to something you had said, Craig, uh, that we were discussing, uh, nuisance and trash and things, that I'm not sure we have a, um, means in the city now to go around and pick up things like this. And I know one time we discussed maybe having something, uh, set up where a citizen could pay or whatever to have some things like this picked up. This may be a springboard, some more conversation about that. Right now, I don't think we can help. Did you tell me about the two dumb days that we recently had? I did, but he doesn't have a way of loading the stuff and getting them there, and he was hoping that there was like a truck or something to come around and pick them up. Yep. And, uh, I said, no, right now, we don't have that, but that's a good springboard, it does have a conversation, so.
I know the street department has been doing some covert, um, spot cleanups. Um, so, there may be some, if you get an address to Sam, it may be something that.
Okay, I'll work on that. Uh, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Other miscellaneous? Sam?
Yeah. Sam, to give you guys some news, um, we lost one of our employees last night, Jimmy Smith. He is a lab technician at the wastewater plant. He'd served almost sixty years in public service, half of it military service, the other half working for the City of Ironton Wastewater Plant. I just wanted to make sure that we're recognizing, and whatever we can do to reach out to the family and help out.
Any other miscellaneous? Bob?
Mr. Jer.
Ben.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Riz.
Thank you, we are here.